I'd like to call this meeting to order if everyone will stand and join me in the pledge.
Would you make sure and ask the two absent council members to state their name when they vote?
Okay.
And how they're voting?
My council has their agenda in front of them, those that are here. Is there a motion that we approve or are there any changes? On the agenda?
On the minutes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, that's a delay. Are there any announcements this evening?
I do have one, if you would please, when you're talking to your mic, stay about a foot away from it. If you get too close, your voice gets all cracked on the, on the interweb.
Come on. Too close so far. Is there any public, was there any public comment received?
No.
Moving along. Okay, now to the consent agenda. Brian, I believe this is where you have to change.
I have a question about the minutes, I think on page four. On the vote for the planning board residency requirement. I don't think, I think it was, nothing changed or anything, it was four one versus unanimous. No, it is on mine too. That's alright.
Me too, that's a mail. That's right, Brian voted against.
Which vote?
At the top of page four, where it says, just remember, his motion was seconded by Councilman Kaski and it was passed by unanimous verbal consent. It was actually-
The planning board change.
Okay. So, I can, I will make that correction.
That was all I know.
Do you want to make the motion to accept the consent agenda with the change?
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda with the change. I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, to the regular agenda, A, item A is request for solicitation in the park from the League of Women Voters.
So, the, the park policy on solicitation is that it's, it's essentially not allowed without council's permission. And so what you have tonight for user requests in the League of Women Voters, and I have the applicant on, on the line and she can speak to what they want to do, but basically set up a table to register voters for, for this fall's election. So, give me one moment to get her on the line. Karen, if you can hear me, it's, it's all you.
Okay, you can all hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, great. This is Karen Kessler, I am the Voter Services Chair for the League of Women Voters of Henderson County. And during the summer and the fall is when we normally start getting geared up for the November election. And I just want to say first that the League of Women Voters is totally nonpartisan. We never endorse a candidate, we never endorse a political party. What our focus is on is on registering voters and then getting them the information that they need to make an informed choice, whatever that choice is, in the November election. This fall, of course, and the summer has become a little bit of a challenge for us in terms of where to register voters, so we have turned our attention to outdoor venues. We are trying to set up voter registration tables at farmers markets, in parks, and in front of stores, so that people will be a little bit more comfortable, be, both our volunteers and the people who need to register, will be more comfortable. We do practice all social distancing, we have clipboards, we slide across tables to people, we have masks, we have one-use pens, we have hand sanitizer. And what we're focusing on initially is voter registration and also giving people information about requesting an absentee ballot. The laws have changed for that for this November. And so we have a handout that explains those changes, explains the process of requesting the ballot, completing it, submitting it, and we have the request forms that we can give them along with an addressed envelope that they could send everything into the Henderson County Board of Elections. Later on in the summer, we hope to have some candidate events, even if we have to do them virtually. So at that point, we would also have information about candidate events, vote 4011, and the hours and locations for the one-stop voting. So what I'd like to ask the council to consider is whether we can have a table at the Mills River Park, I've been there to walk and it gets a great number of people walking around. And at that table, as I said, it would be voter registration and absentee ballot information. In the other parks, we've done anywhere from one to three hours. We've gotten some guidance from parks and from councils about what would be good times to set up. We're, we're really pretty flexible, we can do it during the week, we can do it on weekends. What I'd like to do is to maybe have a time once in August and once in September when we could be at the Mills River Park. You have questions or comments?
I don't have any problem with that, I think our, our concerns before with the previous situation was being people approaching people. So if you're standalone at a table, I don't have any issue.
Right, we, we would have a table, we can have a, a, get covered, you know, with shade if we're out in the sun, but we would be behind the table and kind of talking with people on the other side of the table.
And Karen, you, you've been out at the Mills River Farmers Market.
Yes.
A time, gee, how's that going?
Um, that went well, we, we registered one person when we were there, but we gave out close to 50 requests for absentee ballots. And we do, I would like to go back there again because a lot of people stopped by the table and seemed interested.
Yeah, so I saw you guys when you were out there and it seemed like it was, you were getting good traction, but again, it was not a disruptive situation at all. And one thing we know about the League of Women Voters is completely nonpartisan, just providing information to voters and to people who want it and to people who approach the table. So, I, I think, you know, we looked at that situation last time where people wanted to approach people and walk up to them with clipboards and this would be something completely different. People would have to physically walk up to the table to, to engage.
It would be signs on the table, I think people would know why we were there and it would be their choices to, you know, we might ask people a question as they walk by, but we're not going to go up to people.
So just so, for the record, this would be permission granted under section 90.011 of Town Code, which falls under the profiteering section of the Parks Ordinance. I have confirmed with your attorney that this is perfectly acceptable regarding First Amendment, if there's any concerns about that. If, if council is, is so inclined, it could place conditions on it such as what has been described as having a table as opposed to approaching people, but that's entirely-
Yeah, that was, would be my only issue, we had complaints before about being, people being approached when they were trying to be-
Right.
Recreating.
I agree with Shay, as long as, as, as the table is there and nobody's soliciting the registration, I'm fine with it.
Roger, can you hear us?
What?
Can you hear this? You have any thoughts, are you good?
Can, can I ask a question? Because I want to make sure I abide by anything that you want. We would not have people approaching, but would it be okay to say something to someone as they walk past the table? Or you just want volunteers to remain quiet?
Karen, one second, one of our council members is on the phone, so you can't hear him, but he's talking to that, hang on one second.
I just have a thought with, with the organization, when the, the client, when it's there, is that if I'm not there, then, until I can get you to follow it, because it's kind of strange. But if they won't give them the signatures, that's a lot bad, then, then you know it's bad. But if there's, if people are walking, there's that. I said, I like the problem here, that there's, I just can't imagine, people walking in the dog parks and so forth.
I prefer a passive, a passive approach, not a-
And I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear what he was saying, if-
The concern was similar to what someone had voiced earlier about having a table as opposed to actively going out and seeking people, rather have them come up to you guys, which is what you prescribed.
And is it okay as people walk past the table to let them know what we have? We do have signage up, so we wouldn't necessarily have to say anything.
I prefer that, it's always kind of awkward if you're like, oh faster, you know, don't want to be approached.
Okay, okay, yeah, no, we, we won't chase anybody.
You're just walking the other way, when you want back.
So do we need a motion?
So do we need a motion to allow this?
I would say yes, since it's a condition of our code, that we should do this by motion. I, I would say that you would have a motion to approve the request with the condition that they have a table at a fixed spot and did not solicit people as they went by.
Alright, yeah, can I just make that motion? I'll second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting the request for, from the League of Women Voters? Aye.
Aye.
Roger?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kessler.
Thank you, and who would be a good person to talk to about what a good time or location would be in the park?
I'll, I'll put you in contact with our Parks Recreation Director, she'd be the best contact for that.
Perfect, thank you, thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, and joining us for the first time in a while, Laurlee Taylor with the Agenda B Tax Settlement Statement for Tax Year 2019.
For our new council members, the property tax settlement is presented to you once a year in lieu of our monthly report. And it's a compilation of all the numbers for the 12 months from July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020. So, the original levy for real and personal property received from Henderson County was $2,431,799.02. Discoveries, present use deferments, loss, charge adjustments, exemptions. Not exemptions. Those, those, the items increased that levy by $96,512.49. Deferments and exemptions decreased it by $93,151.59. And then, over the course of the 12 months, amounts of tax that were released for various reasons amounted to a decrease of $22,324.42. So that on June 30th, 2020, the adjusted levy was $2,412,835.50. That's the amount of tax that could possibly, the entire amount of tax that could possibly be collected during that year. So, the actual real and personal property collections through that date were $2,392,152.20. There were no refunds. We collected $6,780.76 worth of interest and penalties, and that results in a collection rate of 99.14%, leaving a balance of the levy to collect of $20,683.30. It's unaudited, we won't, those numbers will not be sentenced down until the auditors come in, look at all the books, look at everything and say, yep, that's right, or make adjustments and possibly change some of these. But that is, to the best of my knowledge, what happened with the 2019, 2020.
Collection rate's awesome, that's the highest ever, right?
It's not the highest ever, but it is better than last year.
Great job.
That is a job well done, congratulations.
Thank you.
Do anything on that, right?
Have any questions, questions?
Okay, next on the agenda is item C, the financial dashboard as of June 30th, 2020.
And my apologies to the council members who are not in the room, but I have provided an updated financial dashboard, and I will just very quickly give you the highlights of what I changed before we get going. The, the fourth column over from the left, the header has had June 30th, 2020, and it's June 30th, 2019. And under expenditures, for the line item for debt service, a number had not carried forward from the March dashboard. So, the, am I looking at the wrong one? Hang on, I think I've, did I say the wrong one? My apologies, I have so many copies of this file that I still printed you the wrong one. But the only change is to debt service, the actual, for the fiscal year, is $523,507. So that means that your actual fiscal year expenditures are $3,355,299. And I will provide you with a new copy. And those, those are basically the changes I made. So, where do we stand? If you look at your numbers, if you look at your, under revenues, look at your actual first fiscal year versus your budget, it looks like we're under budget. Reality is that we are over budget on all of our revenues. If you look at the individual line items, each is over. We adjust, we amended our budget to allow for capital outlays. So, we brought money in from fund balance, and that was offset by our capital outlays under expenditures. So, in reality, all of the revenues we were collecting are over budget. If you look at your original budget amount of $3,441,770, and then you look at your actual fiscal year, you can see that we are significantly off the budget. And if that's totally confusing, call me, we'll talk, or, or I'll answer a question in a minute. There are some motor vehicle revenues and some sales tax and utility sales tax revenues that will continue to come in July, August, September, and those will be brought forward by the auditors into your financial report. So that will, because they were earned in the 1920 fiscal year, so that will increase these numbers when you get your audited financial report. Expenses for each, expenses are a lot more straightforward. You can see for your actual fiscal year, versus your budget, amended budget, we are under budget on all expenses. And even if you look at the original budget amount, which is a footnote there, we are still under budget. All of your departments came in under budget. Which of course is a great thing. I'm going to start with the bottom graph, your cash distribution. This is pretty much stayed fairly stagnant as far as where things were distributed over the last year or so, but that's going to be changing as interest rates are dropping. We need to get funds where we can as a CD matures. If I can get a decent amount for it, I'll reinvest it, but I'm just as likely to move it so we're more liquid. Also with the unknowns going forward with revenues, it's to our benefit to have things more liquid. But you can see, like your North Carolina Capital Management Trust term account, isn't that, at the end of June was at .24%. A year ago, we were over 2%. Your, your NCCMT government account is at .07. That was closer to 2% a year ago, awesome. Your CDs are still decent, though they all mature by December. So, we'll see. And the money market account at First Citizens is now settled at .03%. It never got over .15, even when the economy was good. So we always limit what's there, but keep it ready in case we need something. I've recently pulled it down even further because there's no point in letting your money not make money. Alright, the next graph, your fund balance commitments. This reflects not the new budget, but June 30. So, I'm, I'm showing you what's left on the solar panel contract, which is the million, I'm sorry, 103,810. The bike pad planning grant is still, we were committed at $10,000. The Mills River Valley Trail, we were committed at $60,000. The, let's see, wait a minute, let's see, electric vehicle charging station, it's $35,000. Then you have your assigned fund balance for cat, for building maintenance and law enforcement, and a reserve I like to keep for cash flow. So that, that would leave you with $2,228,911 as uncommitted fund balance as of June 30. Some of those projects you move forward to the new year. And as you recall, also said, let's hold off on. But commitments are there. So, I've also given you an updated accounting on your project fund for the capital project fund for the ball field. And that's as of June 30, what we have not, basically what's been budgeted, we have paid for, is $311,811.98. And I have just thrown a lot of information at you, so if you have questions, please.
Have I had to get into the contingency at all, right?
I'm sorry?
You've not had to get into the contingency fund for the baseball field?
No, we have not had to get into the contingency fund as of yet. But now, I don't know if the invoices have gone to, to, but, but the contract has a contingency, but we've not necessarily pulled funds out of contingency.
Do they have questions, Sue?
Sue?
Yes.
Does, does the uncommitted fund balance, does that include your cash flow, that you were keeping out, 1.5 million?
No, that is separate.
That is separate, okay, thank you.
That is separate.
Moving on. Item D, the independent auditor, the agreement and audit contract amendment.
I'll just give a quick primer. Government accounting standards have changed a little bit and some of the smaller towns in the state, Mills River happens to be one of them, typically have one auditor and also refer to that auditor for questions on occasion. So, this is basically an extra set of eyes, someone to audit our audits, so to speak. And I'll turn it over to Sue to give you all the details on it.
And Danielle kind of summed that up fairly well. It's the local government commission and Gatsby, which is the General County Standards Board, that sets national standards for accounting. They, they, they are concerned that our independent auditor is not independent enough. So, we have to have someone who is capable of reviewing the, the final audit product, the final financial report, and make sure it has complied with all of their standards. It's not a second audit to recheck all the numbers. It's, as every schedule is supposed to be completed, been completed, is it presented in the proper format. Some of the larger towns are able to, to use someone on staff to do this, but we're small. We're all touching all these numbers. And frankly, I'm not sure we, we have the same qualifications a CPA would have to make sure all this. It's, it's a different thing they're looking for than we work with every day. So, our, our current auditor has recommended a gentleman, he's a Mills River resident, Brian Broome. He is recently retired from Deloitte, not Deloitte. I can't remember the name of the firm now. Dixon Hughes Goodman, he is very recently retired, and he has agreed to do that final review for $2,000, if council so approves. We also have to reapprove our audit contract if we do this because it had to be in within a certain timeframe. And as a placeholder, we threw my name in it, at the advice of our auditor, Mr. Shaw. But I don't have those qualifications and I don't feel comfortable reviewing all of it when either myself or Oralie or Patty has done all of the work that's being audited. So, we just have to do an amended contract telling them who is going to do it.
And the money for this additional contract was budgeted as part of the budget it was recently adopted.
So Sue, I don't recall us doing this in years past, is it a new requirement?
Yes, it is a brand-new requirement that's effective this year.
Okay, I see, thank you.
Yes? And I would absolutely agree, but this gentleman will not be reviewing our numbers. He's reviewing to make sure the audit, that the final audit, audited financial report is in the right format, has all the right schedules, because they keep changing. They're bringing government audited financial reports closer to the, what a, what a regular business would do. So there, we'll have our, our government schedules and then we have these more commercial schedules. And so there's more for the auditor to be doing, and so they want someone else to make sure it's being done right. And so, there's more for the auditor to be doing, and so they want someone else to make sure it's being done right.
Other questions? Randy, any question?
No, I'm okay.
Are you gonna need permission to do the modified contract?
Yes, you need to authorize me to sign it.
We're gonna author, if it's all right, authorize Daniel to sign the engagement letter, but because Shay has always signed the audit contract, then it'd be better for her. Well, actually, let's have Shay sign both, because these are agreements between the two auditors and the board. It's because the government people looking at it. It's who's signed before.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the agreement with the independent auditor. And that Shay takes care of it. I'll second.
All those in favor?
And then we either need to amend that motion, or we need to have a second motion to approve the amended audit contract. That's all right, which is easier for you.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the amended audit contract. And again, I'll second.
All those in favor of approving the amended audit contract?
Aye.
We're sort of on delay, Sue. Are you getting everybody that way a little easier?
Actually, it's much easier having them on delay.
And item E on the agenda is our planning board vacancy.
Okay, excuse me, my voice is going. At your last meeting, you amended the general rules of procedure for the, for membership on the planning board and the board of adjustment, requiring that they, these members be residents. And you allowed existing non-resident members to complete their terms. Your current planning board chair's term expires today, and she is a non-resident member. So she has been informed, and we have an opening. And I provided you with copies of the existing application if you choose to take action.
I'd like to nominate Mary Ann Osby for that position, for that open position.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of appointing Mary Ann Osby to the planning board vacancy? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Roger? Was that aye that you're opposed, or aye that you're for? And I'm sorry, Mr. Kaski, I did not catch your vote. Through the regular agenda. So we have staff updates, which is also you first, Sue.
I do this to myself.
You type this up.
Where things go. The only thing I have is that, with your permission, I will take the remaining planning board applications and contact these people to see if they might be interested in our board of adjustment opening.
An alternate, second alternate?
It's a second alternate, yes.
And update from the tax collector?
Will you turn your microphone on, please?
We're getting a few more payments on our online payment portal. Payments are slow this time of year anyway, so it's nice to be able to work the bugs out of it before a lot of people get to it. They can actually print off paid bills in past years, and hopefully we'll be able to print off 2020 bills pretty soon. Henderson County told me that they should have the files for this year, the week of the 20th of July. We're looking into enclosing with our bill a payment coupon page with four payments due October 1, November 1, December 1, January 1, showing a quarter payment, you know, for the whole bill, just to make it a little bit easier for people to budget. And maybe, you know, they might be more inclined to pay the whole bill if they can break it down into four payments instead of the whole bill. I'm looking into what that's gonna cost us. And we're also, we're also pricing, pricing out the cost of a drop-off just in case people don't really feel like they should come in the office for whatever reason they can't get here during office hours, and they would rather pay with a check in person, in person. Just giving people more options to make them feel a little bit safer and happier to pay. That's all I've got.
Thank you. And Tom Inger?
So we've got some really good news lately. First, in the Parks and Recreation Field, we reviewed the bike grant that we applied for earlier this year for bike helmets from NC DOT, so we've got 75 helmets. Typically, those are given out as part of the party in the park. This year, that's not going to work out because of everything that's going on. Yes, yes. So we're leaning towards keeping those in storage for now and then doing it next year at Party in the Park. If an opportunity presents itself throughout the year where we can partner with someone, we might have an event independent of that, but that's yet to be determined. We do have those in-house now. Also, in the Parks Department, we've got, we got worried that the funding has been approved for the Streamback Restoration Grant. So we have to work out all the details yet on that. But the state has told us that we expect to have some semblance of either a contract or agreement for review in the next several weeks. And so, willing to look at that. Hopefully, your next meeting in August, we'll have that, and we can present it to you for additional consideration. It is a 75,000, it's 50/50, I believe.
It is.
50/50 match. So our portion is 75,000. So that money has been approved. House bill was passed, all that's signed and sealed, and that money is going to be released soon. Other news, I'm sure you saw the baseball field on your way in, the poles are going in for the fencing. Those are some impressive poles. 30 feet doesn't sound like much until you see it vertical in comparison to everything else. So those are going in. Things are going well with that, with the baseball field project in general. Solar panels are also going in. They're moving along as weather allows for that. The picnic shelter is done, the restrooms are done. I didn't check this afternoon, but they've been putting on the clamps on this building the last several days, and panels will go up for that soon. Parks Director and the, and design company are working on the rebate process for that, so we can get that processed. We're still awaiting final inspections and things like that, so nothing is active yet, but it's in the works. With the governor's latest order extending Phase 2 and the mandatory mask requirement, we have implemented masks within town hall policy, so that when you're outside of your individual office, you have a mask on. And that's worked out pretty well, other than just the discomfort of wearing a mask. There's been no other issues with it. Typically, you're eating lunch in our offices by ourselves. If we can't social distance, then we're wearing the mask. Guys in the parks are wearing masks when they interact with the public. Otherwise, once we're cutting grass, they're not required to wear them, because they're typically more than six feet from each other. And as far as planning goes, we have about 10 applications now for the planning position. One more yesterday, so I'm not exactly sure what our count is up to. It's around 10. We've received several very well-qualified candidates for that. We've had a couple of phone interviews. The application window closes next week, so we'll, that's more phone interviews scheduled for next week, and then we'll move forward with the next round of interviews. Unfortunately, those are gonna have to be on Zoom as opposed to being in person, which is the best we can do right now. But that's moving along. The Making Mills River Comprehensive Plan is moving along nicely. It feels like there was a little bit of lull in activity because we weren't able to meet in person, but we've been working behind the scenes on all the technical information. So our land use assessment is just about wrapped up, and that was basically Phase 1 of that project. And that will really help lay the groundwork for the policy discussion that we're going to be having this fall. We're looking at mid to late September for some actual public engagement. That will likely be a combination of a virtual setting and hopefully in-person. We're depending upon where things stand with COVID-19. We will either be under the picnic shelter, where we can spread out a little bit more, or might just have to do it online again, which is not ideal. But we've put this off thinking that at some point we'd be able to get together as a group, and there's just too much unknown. And we need to keep the plan moving, so we're just gonna move forward with what we can do, which is probably gonna be online from here to the foreseeable future. But that work is happening. It's really going to start to ramp up a little bit, and we're gonna start making good progress on that. So that's really exciting. And other than that, things are going well. We've done, I think Orly has mentioned the online tax payment system, and that was a fair bit of work to get set up. Looking forward to what that will produce for us this year. So that's quite an accomplishment, and otherwise, things are going well in town hall and the park.
Randy, any comments before we go to closed session?
No, everything's okay.
Roger, anything from you?
Sure. Roger and I were talking about getting a revised quote. The numbers that we provided for the budget discussion was from, it was either from December or early spring for the work, the steps that we were looking at for the maintenance building. So we were gonna reach back after those folks to confirm what the cost was there to see if it's changed since then. So we have accurate numbers. That's all right.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we enter into closed session.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are going to go offline.
And staff is dismissed besides Daniel.
Staff is dismissed besides Daniel.